Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history. Meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. But please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Councilmember Capes is absent. Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Councilmember Rayburn, would you lead us in the pledge? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to request that the approval of minutes from the June 20, 2023 regular Town Council meeting be removed from the consent agenda and that Budget Amendment Number One be added as the last item on the consent agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I have two quick questions about the consent agenda. Anybody mob Beth? And I'm going to assume that these have already been done, but I just want to make sure on the agenda item number 11H. Have you been over that signature document and everything okay with you?
Are you talking about the donation?
No, that would've been the next question, but the first one, just for the signatures from staff.
I have not seen the resolution approving authorized signatures, but I can take a quick look.
Okay. Actually, I said that backwards. 11H was for the donation, so that's the next question. You okay with that donation?
I have not. I don't think they've talked to me about the donation yet. That would be probably unusual unless they had a question about it. Glad to talk to Matt right now, so you can leave it on the agenda.
You want to give her a brief real quick, sir?
No problem at all with the donation.
On both accounts?
I'm coming over.
Sure, thank you.
Signatures are due by retirement.
You don't have to hear a word or something?
Individual. I'll take it.
Yeah, I would just say that resolution is a standard thing we do anytime, like duty retirements, so you'll have to upgrade the signatures.
That's correct.
For the deputy finance director, and then one person in case one's absent. So that's a standard thing that's done.
I figured it was. I just wanted to make sure that we're following anything that may have changed.
No issues at all with the signatures.
Counsel, have any specific questions about the donation materials? Make sure.
No, I think yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Do I have anyone signed up for the public comment period?
Nobody signed up.
Dave, would you meet me at the podium, please?
Whereas on the occasion of his retirement, it is fitting and proper to recognize Dave Ingram for his dedication to the town of Jamestown with his more than 35 years of service. And whereas Dave joined the town of Jamestown as a groundskeeper, one, and was promoted across the duration of his career. And whereas he has been a dependable employee and an integral part of the town of Jamestown Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas Dave has always been willing to complete various tasks given to him without complaint. And whereas his loyalty to the town of Jamestown and to the Jamestown Park and Golf Course is unrivaled. And whereas the citizens of Jamestown have benefited from his dedication to improving and creating areas in which they can participate in recreational activities with their family and friends. And whereas Dave cares deeply about his family and has a sense of humor that has brought levity to even the hottest days on the course. And whereas the positive impacts that Davis made in the town of Jamestown through his public service and his value to the town cannot be measured. Now therefore, I, Lynn Montgomery, Mayor of the Town of Jamestown and the Town Council, do hereby express our deep appreciation to Dave Ingram for his distinguished years of service and do extend our best wishes in the next chapter of this line.
Thank you.
Did everybody else get pictures?
Any party words?
Or did they have lighting issues?
Of course, I should get any partying words.
Thank you for your service.
Paul, would you come forward and give us an overview of the amendments to the solid waste ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We are here to request approval of the amendments to the solid waste ordinance for the town of Jamestown. The changes are necessary for two main reasons. City of High Point has, they will not be allowing us to use plastic bags anymore for yard waste. It will improve the quality of their compost and topsoil. And those changes mean that paper bags that are made for yard waste will be an approved way of disposing of yard waste that we can collect. And containers, we have ordered containers that were in last year's budget. 95 gallon containers are brown, they're similar to our larger carts. That's an option for citizens that they can purchase. Cardboard boxes will no longer be accepted. That was an operational change from the city of High Point. The other big change was mattresses are now not a bulky item that we can take to the landfill. We have to take it to a certain facility for recycling, so that is an item similar to white goods where they would call Town Hall for a pickup. We also addressed some formatting issues. Had a couple typos in the document, try to clean that up. And we sent a mailer out last week to inform citizens, I believe it went out Thursday. That's really the main issues that we've changed in the amendment.
I have had a couple people ask. We will still have the loose leaf pickup, October to February.
Yes, loose leaf pickup remains unchanged.
Okay.
Couple clarifications. You talked about cardboard boxes, and just so people understand, cardboard boxes can still be recycled, it's just they're not going to be used to put grass clippings and twigs and things of that nature on the side of the road, has been done in the past. That's the only changes with cardboard boxes?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly right.
Couple other questions about, if we want to talk about the actual written part of it. Article seven says transportation of refuse by private persons. If a business owner owns their own dumpster, according to this, they can't operate on the roadway. Is there any clarification on that? They can still take their own personal dumpster or their business dumpster if they want to tow it to the dumping yard or whatever, they can still do that, right? They're not going to be fined for transporting their own dumpster?
There was no change to that section of the ordinance. There was no change to the ordinance there.
I'm sorry, I can't.
There was no change to the ordinance?
Okay, so, all right, so they will not be fined for it. The other question I have is, is there's a couple of things that talked about banned from landfills. And in red, right after pallets, it says, "Plastic yard waste bags." Just so the public knows, they can still dispose of those in the green toters that is for regular garbage pickup, but this is only applying to, as this is written, is only applying to yard waste.
Correct. It is just not an option for yard waste going forward.
It's just a little discombobulated in how it reads if you read the whole thing overall. And the other question I have is, is in section, or article 568, section F. And this is for folks that know things about motors versus engines. Motors are normally DC-operated engines or some sort of Petro or ignition type systems. Specifically, it says here automotive parts, including but not limited to motors. Generally speaking, a vehicle has an engine as its propellant, as its way of going versus, you know, an electric car. Now, there are motors in a vehicle, but generally speaking, in the automotive world, if you say, "Well, my motor's a 354," somebody's going to kick you because it's an engine. So I don't know if you want to add maybe engines and/or motors. You know, I think the word would be beneficial when folks just said, "I didn't throw away a motor, I thought it was an engine."
Yes.
Just throwing it out there. Then last but not least, on, what section is that? This is under bulky waste. I've seen and actually grabbed a few, but folks will throw away old mowers and treadmills that have motors on it and fans and things of that nature. We still going to pick those up under bulky waste?
That is, that is the intent, unless it would fall under a white good or an E good, a type of electric good.
Say that one more time.
Like an electric appliance, like TVs and such.
Like a treadmill. Somebody throws out a treadmill, we're not going to pick it up, it's going to have to Or box fans for that matter?
Well, a box fan would actually fit in the cart, but that's a bulky, a box fan is easily a bulky item pickup setup.
So we don't know about the treadmill? Or how about old pushmowers? People riding, or weed eaters or those sort of things. People put them out because they're cleaning out the garage and they're getting rid of stuff. Are we not going to pick them up, or are we going to pick them up?
Yeah, and I think the language, and I didn't go reread it at this moment, but I thought it did have, if the oil had been removed? The oil is supposed to be removed when they put it at the curb.
Okay. I didn't find that, but there is indications of no oil or oil filters and things of that nature, but I don't think it specifically said lawnmowers. Well, those are my questions.
Any other questions, Counsel? Thank you, Paul. At this time, we'll open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak regarding the amendment to the solid waste ordinance. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please adhere to the three-minute So you're done, I will close the public hearing and return to Counsel. Any discussion further?
In my opinion, those things need to be addressed to some degree. It could be done later, I imagine, but you know, some of those are.
Your engines versus motors are inclusive?
Yeah, that and, you know, the other things it doesn't talk about, that somebody's going to be told that they can't put up. I just use those as an example, it just came off the top of my head when it comes to bulky items, but it's something that I've certainly ridden around in neighborhoods before and seen on the side of the road. And people are going to throw them out, and then they're going to get a notification, "No, you can't do it." I'd rather them be told ahead of time than, "No, you can't do it." Versus it sitting and they got to pull it back in.
I kind of read it as, you know, falling under, there's a maximum amount of five cubic yards. It says that, how many feet wide, how many feet high, and it would just sort of depend on, you know, when you were talking about a treadmill versus a weed eater or something, I think the sizing would sort of be that. And as far as the motor, it does say, what, inclusive but not limited to? I mean, I agree, you know, it's good to be as clear as possible, but.
We did make a notation to make that clarification. 8F for engines as well.
Okay.
And the other thing that you feel, Rebecca, do you feel like the other issue, like a treadmill, has been covered in the language?
Last one I had looked at too was the size that they put in there, to sort of judge from that.
Well, but a treadmill can be folded up and just standing up straight. There's well underneath that size limit, but then again, are we going to pick it up or not?
I think you would. And the electronics are the TVs and computers and that kind of thing, so that, I wouldn't say a treadmill is an electronic, you know, so as long as it's within that weight or that size, I think they would pick it up. Because I'm sure you're going to have, you can't think of everything that somebody could put out there. There's no tell, I put a grill out there the other day. But they would have to call, and it states in here that sometimes it's a case-by-case basis, and, you know, it's something we haven't thought of that they put out, and the town would be able to tell them if they could pick it up or if there would be a fee.
No, I agree, you can't think of everything, but.
But you try to.
The articles that you ride around, you see constantly, but.
True, yeah.
And this is a big change for the town.
It is.
Everything is completely different from the way it was. Used to be you set it out and it got gone.
I know, and I hate that this has gone into effect, but it was really, it was not of our choosing.
No, I'm with you. I've gotten two phone calls about the, and one of them was about the leaves and the other was about grass. I'm like, we didn't impose this, it was something that we have to impose because somebody else imposed it on us.
Yeah.
Why aren't y'all taking care of it? We are, we deliver it to a facility that says, "Thou shalt do it this way."
For the discussion?
We have made that clarification for engines, so if there is a motion in favor, please add that to the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
The motion to be inclusive of the changes that we've discussed this evening?
Then I move to adopt the amendments to Chapter 51, Solid Waste in the Towns Code and Ordinances, inclusive of the changes that we've discussed this evening.
Paul in favor?
I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Cliff, would you like to discuss the Christmas parade with us? And let us think about snow and that sort of thing right now.
Let us think about that, yes, please. I'm here on behalf of the Jamestown Rotary Club and our co-sponsors, as always, to request a permit for the Christmas parade on Sunday, December 3rd, and also requesting the town continue the excellent support we've had from the staff. And then three general categories of financial support that are listed in Section 2 of our application. That would be postage and handling of mailings by the clerk's office, reimbursement for the cost of sheriff's deputies to help us with the parade, and a new item, reimbursement for the cost of a couple of portable toilets to sort of augment the facilities that will be available here in the civic center. So are there any questions or concerns I can address?
Just like I say, you guys always put on a magnificent parade. It's, other towns, they just, they hate the fact that you guys do it so well, and just want to say I appreciate that, and it's well organized out back.
Well, thank you very much.
Nobody's walking around going, "Where do I go, where do I go?" You're being told exactly where you go and how to get there and helps there, not just said, "You got to be over there," and say, "Come on, let's help you out."
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I always hear the ones that don't know where to go, so I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Any?
Any other questions for Cliff?
I would make a motion to approve the special event permit request for the Jamestown Rotary Club Christmas parade with $1,075 in funding for law enforcement, 300 for portable toilets, and 150 in funding for postage and assistance from the public service staff. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Madam Mayor, if you will permit me one quick aside, I noticed your golf course staff is here tonight. I just wanted to thank them very quickly for the great job they did on our Rotary Golf Turnout recently. Very nice job, so.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Jamie, would you like to give us a maintenance report from the golf course?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Cart paths, we have discussed before, we have done a lot of cart path work, patched up our roughest spots, and they're a little bit smoother now. And I'd like to say a special thanks to Paul Blanchard, James Conrad, Jason Peregum, and of course, Matthew, for helping us get this project completed. They stayed with it, and I've helped us out a lot so we could focus more on the golf course, and we greatly appreciate it. But they are, the cart paths are a lot better, and I think people appreciate it.
I've ridden it, and it is.
Yes.
It's a whole lot less bumpy.
The bathrooms, they're coming along pretty nice. They got the doors, windows, siding, roof. They haven't started the inside with the vanities and stuff like that, but they're getting closer, and every week we can see a difference in the bathrooms, so they're coming along pretty good as well. The maintenance building, it's showing a lot of signs of improvement as well. They have the windows in, the doors in, the bay doors in, some venting that cools off the shop, regulates temperature. They have all the plumbing in the walls. They don't have the power yet, but that's coming soon. But every week we see improvements on that, and hopefully we'll be in it next month, they say, but we'll see. We had a lot of tree stumps, old tree stumps when we first got here. There was 68 of them in total, and we hired a guy to come out here and grind those stumps down, and he did a great job, gave us a good price, and looks a whole lot better out there with those old stumps out of the way. And most of them are, we filled most of the holes where the stumps were. We got a couple more in some spots, and we'll get to those ASAP. We ordered some new bunker sand as well, which help improve our bunkers. We ordered two loads of sand, we put those, that sand out, and most of the bunkers, we focused our efforts on the bunkers that looked the worst, like number nine, but it looks better, it's more white sand, so it looks better. And I think people appreciate it. And in the future, we will order some more loads as the temperatures get cooler and we have more time to work on those, but we'll get some more sand in there and we'll help them look even better. The weather, finally getting some hot weather. The Bermuda grass loves this 70-degree mornings and hot, hot temperatures, moist, humid. June wasn't a good month for warm Bermuda grass weather, and May was not either, but we're finally getting it, we're finally getting into some 90s. We did airify our greens last week, last Monday, and they're coming along nice. Everything went well, the equipment held up good. We got the sand applied twice on the greens. We fertilized them this morning, and they love this hot weather. We're keeping them wet, moist, it's humid, they love it. They should heal fairly quick. And we will be aerating some problem spots along the golf course, traffic areas, some spots that's slow to come in. We'll hit those spots with the airifier and give those some extra fertilizer and push those to fill in quicker. And also, we ordered some Zorja sod, we put those in some bare areas on number nine, and we want to continue with that on where we have shade issues. I think prior, we used Bermuda grass, and that hasn't been doing so well with the shade, so we're going to try a different type of grass, which I think will work very well with the shade along that area. And we also, a tea on 15 that was bare, we have a lot of shade issues there, and it's either cut the big beautiful oak trees down, which we're not going to do that, or go to a different cultivar. And so we put Zorja right there, and we plan on making that whole tea complex Zorja, or the tea tops. And that's an awesome grass, we really like Zorja. And in a nutshell, that's what we've been doing. So may I answer any questions or concerns, comments?
Are you happy with the maintenance building?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's a huge upgrade from what we're in, so it's hard not to be happy.
That's the only statement I make.
Do we have a backup generator? Do you know?
We do not.
Okay.
We do not. We're waiting to get power and gas, and that's just right around the corner, they say. And there's some small things they need to change that have been discussed, like moving events and stuff like that, that the guys, they worked very well with us.
Did we get any rust from the roof being off for so long and them having erected it?
I haven't seen any. If it is, it's superficial, nothing much, but I know that can turn into a bigger problem, but I haven't seen anything that's concerning.
Good, good.
Well, with not having any rain, are you able to irrigate the greens? Are they okay?
Yes, we irrigate constantly, pretty much every day. We do a little at a time, we don't water everything at one time, just a pump station, we try to take it easy on a pump station. So if we water everything at once, it just, it's a lot of strain on it. So we just water like greens, then tees, fairways, but pretty much every day we use our irrigation. Greens get it about every day, unless it's raining, obviously.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Jamie.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
And Marcy, would you give us a report from the golf shop?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, things are busy at the golf course, it's been a good summer thus far, the golf rounds were up this quarter, they were down a little bit in April, I think that was because of weather, but overall, they are up for this quarter compared to last year, so we're definitely staying busy. One, one other thing we've done, we have started taking tee times on the weekends, at 7:30, we normally start at eight, well, every day but Monday, but for weekends, we started taking tee times at 7:30 to accommodate more golfers, people tend to like to play earlier before it gets super hot, so we started this on June 25th, and thus far, it has been a real hit for people, every weekend day, we are filling all three of those extra tee times, which makes a difference, each weekend, that's an additional $1,080.
Wow, that's awesome.
Oh, great.
For, for a month, you know, if it fills, which it has, 43, we figured 4320 in a month, if they all fill up, which they, would they have been, so we're going to do this for weekends, and we did it for the 4th, and we're going to do it every weekend until Labor Day.
Yeah, awesome.
And so people, people have really liked that, so that's been good. The driving range has been a real hit, no pun intended, since we reopened with our new grass tee and our new mat, we try to stay off the mat as much as we can, because people prefer to hit off the grass, but with as much, as, as much, well, I won't say play, as many people are hitting on the grass, it, it does tear it up quite quickly, so every once in a while, we do have to move back to the mat to let the grass rest and regrow, but the driving range is actually up $4,500 this, this quarter compared to last year.
Right.
So, and we, we actually have gone up on our range ball, so the small bucket has gone to $5, and the large has gone to 10, and I have not heard one complain about it, so that's, that's been good. Let's see, we are incorporating our new logo, bringing the, the bluebird back, and we're hearing a lot of compliments about that, too, people are really liking to see the bird, you know, it's kind of a slow process to get it, you know, incorporated into everything, I'm working on scorecards now, you know, just working on, we'll eventually hopefully get it onto the golf carts, signage, we do have new apparel coming, we're hoping that that will be here within the next few weeks, hats, shirts, towels, stuff like that. You know, the concession area is doing really well, too, since the grill closed on May 5th, we're, we're having the pre-made sandwiches, and honestly, we almost sell out every single week from those, and I haven't heard any complaints about them, so we do get questions about the grill, you know, being open or not, or when it's going to reopen, but as far as sales go, June was pretty much the same as it was last June with sales.
Interesting.
Let's see, we did do seven room rentals this quarter, and we also had 15 golf tournaments slash outings, so like I say, we've been busy.
That was busy, yeah, that was a busy buck, uh-huh.
Do y'all have any questions, or?
That's a good report, and that was a good idea, doing the 7:30 tee time.
Yeah, it's been, it's been really good, and Jamie and I have talked about maybe doing that six days a week at some point.
Yeah.
Because we, you know, people want to get out there before it gets really hot, so.
Well, good idea.
Yeah.
Well, I've been at several events that are non-golf related, and golfers have pulled me aside and been very complimentary of you, and just said that they love, you know, your attitude and the new things happening there, so that's exciting to hear, and I love the bluebird.
Yes, I do, too. Yeah, awesome.
Thank you, Marcy.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Anna, you have a request for a public hearing?
Good evening, back in May, Councilmember Rayborn asked staff to look at the sign ordinance, specifically in regards to digital signage in Jamestown, staff have prepared updates for Chapter 17 signs, in addition to some minor changes throughout the ordinance to correct errors, revisions to specific development standards, and consistency and clarity. This item was heard by Planning Board at the June 12th meeting, and was recommended to council with some minor additions that will be presented, staff recommend setting a public hearing date for August 22nd, 2023, regular town council meeting.
Any questions for Anna at this time? Do you have a motion?
I move to set a public hearing date for the consideration of amendments to Chapter 17 Signs in the LDO for the August 22nd Regular Town Council Meeting at 6 o'clock PM in the Civic Center at Town Hall.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Anna. And Matthew, do you have the EMS contract for us?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council, EMS space lease contract that we have an agreement with Guilford County EMS expires, it's a five-year contract expired July 1st, this is a renewal of that five-year lease agreement for that space, item has been reviewed by the town attorney, there is one very, very minor amendment that has come in Article 6, under inspections, the very last sentence, which starts with "lessy shall indemnify," they added just before that, "to the extent permitted by law," very, very minor, I just wanted to be clear about that, but otherwise, Beth has reviewed this, and we've been back and forth with the county and the county attorney, and they will hear this at their August meeting, August 3rd? August 3rd, if we can go ahead and agree to send it to them, see them. You have any other questions?
No, of course, I, I love having them here, I love EMS being right here
Absolutely.
For our citizens.
Yes.
So.
I'll second that.
Well, I'll make a motion then to accept the EMS space lease agreement, authorize the town attorney, town manager, assistant town manager, town clerk, and finance officer to execute any required documents.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Matthew, you want to go ahead and
All right, I'll talk about a few things, and I don't have the jokes that Jamie and
It's the heat.
Thank you, I don't have their jokes, but the golf maintenance building, they are, excuse me, the recreation maintenance building, they are finalizing some of the interior components right now, took a look at it today, doing interior work, as you can see, the exterior looks pretty good, and I know that they will be happy to be in there, it looks like it'll probably be in August. Town Hall renovations are currently about, I'd say about 80 or 90% complete, they've made a lot of headway in the last week or so, flooring and paint are pretty much complete, there's some touch-up punch list items that need to be done, I am pretty sure that they will be done, if not by the end of this month, it'll be very, very early in August, and we'll do a, we'll do a quick tour for all of you as soon as, as soon as it looks a little more put together. I do want to say thank you to the public for bearing with us as we had to close offices to move all of the furniture out for them to do the flooring work into the hallways and that kind of stuff, so it was really difficult for us to remain open, but got it done as fast as we could, and that isn't, that isn't thanks really to our public services staff who jumped in there, and all of our, all of our Town Hall staff, but the public services guys came over, helped us move furniture and get that knocked out, so I really appreciate that.
I know you'll be glad to get that done.
Yes.
Be settled, being here with spaces.
There's a lot of dust.
Yeah.
Lot of dust, but that's okay. Golf course bathrooms, as Jamie said, significant progress has been made over the last couple weeks, they, we're working on doing interior work, once the inspections got done, that's out of the way now, they're going to be working on interior, but you can see the siding's been put up, and the, the roof and everything, all that kind of stuff is there, so we're hoping that all of that will be done here in early August. We had a great turnout for Music in the Park, our concert series on Friday, July 7th, our next event will be a Tuesday night, that's Tuesday, August 1st, and then we'll feature AM Rodeo, this is our National Night Out event, and so it will go from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, we have a great selection of food and beverage vendors, we encourage you to come out for that, I know the Sheriff's Department will be there, Pine, Cross, and Hatchfield Fire Department will be there, it's a time for us to celebrate our, our community as well, so we encourage you to come out to that on Tuesday, August 1st, and as, as Paul talked about a little bit earlier, with the changes in solid waste, we have done another mailer to all of our solid waste customers, I believe some of you have said that you have received yours, and we've gotten quite a few inquiries as, as those have been received, I know that they're out there, but we also have a copy on the, on the webpage, as well as some copies available at Town Hall, so if anybody needs information on that, they can certainly call us, we'd be glad to help you. Couple other additional items that I wanted to add here, in the consent agenda was a recognition for Parks and Recreation Month, Scott did want me to tell you that he, sorry, he couldn't be here this evening, but he wanted to say thank you for that recognition.
I was going to say, and Denise Bowie is here, who's a Parks and Rec committee, so thank you for being here, and all that you do to make Parks and Rec good.
Wonderful. Also, there is, and this information will be posted on our social media sites here in just a little bit, Guilford County residents and community members are, can come and look at the new flood insurance rate maps, the firm maps, they're going to, it's going to be a public meeting on Tuesday, July 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Building at 3309 Burlington Road in Greensboro, and I know that Paul and Anna will be there to represent the town of Jamestown and to answer any questions that Jamestown residents may have, and certainly if you can't make that meeting, if you want to make an appointment or call up, you know, Town Hall, they will also help you here as well.
Question about that, has anything changed?
I'm, I'm sure there will be some changes, Paul, you want to, you know, have any of the changes off the top of your head? We were looking at that today, there are a couple places where there are very minor tweaks, it, it, they did not look significant, you know, Riverwalk was one of them, and then over at our Mendenhall Pump Station, they just refined the area probably due to better topographic information.
Good.
Thank you. And finally, I wanted to recognize Anna Havriluck, who has been accepted into the LGFCU, that's Local Government Federal Credit Union Fellows Programs, it's called Leading for Results, it's a fantastic leadership program that's sponsored through the UNC School of Government, there were 170 applicants who vied for 50 spots, and Anna was found worthy of getting the one of those 50 spots, so I'm very, very proud of her for that, and
Congratulations.
Please congratulate her when you see her, so. That's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Council, do we have any meetings to report in committees?
We did have a TAC meeting on June the 27th, and I think last meeting, I had reported the project list, that we would be voting on that in June, and the town had a project on that, well, at our G meeting, that has been tabled, the projects, they say, are still fluid with DOT and detail, so, and they typically do not meet in July, so it'll be August before we'll have that vote, and then I can report if, if it has been approved and passed on the DOT. The only other thing, the NPO is made up with a memo of understanding with all of the municipalities that are involved, there's like 12 towns and cities and counties, and then DOT District 7, 8, and 9, but anyway, that MOU expires in October of '23, and so they have asked for all the elected bodies to approve a renewal, and I'm going to hand this to the town manager and the clerk, and for them to have that on the August meeting, but just to let you know that, will be coming up, and I'll give that to you, I believe, and that's all.
Thank you, Martha. Did you have any?
Guilford County Park and Rec Board did not meet in July, I do have a question or comment, I don't know if this is the right time for it or not, or other business, but we've, we've asked employees, and we always encourage employees to give their best and go above and beyond, should we consider, or should we have Matt and maybe staff consider looking at lump sum merit awards for those that do, and that save money for the town and that sort of thing?
That would be an excellent idea.
I don't know if we need to make a motion for that, or how that would actually go.
Do you need, just a direction?
Just a direction, and I can prepare something, ask Karen to help us with that, and prepare something for a briefing in August for you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. No meetings? I had a PTRC meeting, and it was basically a budget meeting, but we did have one item of interest that I think needs to be publicly announced, it's on our Town of Jamestown Facebook page, it is a Veterans Live, Veterans Benefits Live, and this is so that veterans can actually come and sit with someone in person to discuss their issues and to get help immediately, and to get signed up for benefits, and this will be July the 20th through the 22nd, it'll be at Cogdon Yards, 410 West English Street, and like I said, this is on the town's Facebook page, and I think that's something if we can get out to any veterans who are needing benefits, or who are having trouble getting benefits, that will put them in front of a person who can help them.
That'd be great, yeah.
That was the, the major item I came away with from that meeting. Any other business, or public comments, we have any public comments?
Nobody signed up.
Well, you had
Any other business?
Did you have a planning board meeting, or?
Did you have a
No, no meetings.
Okay.
I just encourage anybody that wants to run for council, get in there before the 21st.
Three more days.
Yeah.
Any other other business? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.